Hey Theresa, you go first.
Evening.
Evening.
Reason for my presence is, um, back in two thousand nineteen anywhere, or February, we switched different tax system from MVP, or what a lot of people call it Manitron, to the LOU system we have currently. And when we per- when we purchased the LOU, they went back as far as history to two thousand sixteen, but they couldn't go any further. And we've had Manitron oh five, actually before that, but it was called something else. So we have a lot of history with the Manitron system, and we got to keep our history from oh five till nineteen when we switched. But unfortunately, in the last few months, we have come to the conclusion with rowing's help that the server is not, not working. So he had me contact Manitron to see kind of price it would cost us to get the information switched to a new server. And unfortunately, y'all well know nowadays being cheap, and they're saying two hundred dollars an hour, and between a minimum of twenty hours, maximum of forty, looking at between four and eight thousand dollars to get the actual history into a server we can use. That is a lot of information to lose as far as our tax system. We have a lot of people that want us to go back in time, and unfortunately, right now, the only thing I can go back to is building my budget worse. So I'm kinda wanting to see what your thoughts are on it, and hoping that you agree with me as far as wanting to retain this history so that, um, as of being, there's only a few years, it wouldn't be that big a deal with that, quite a few years.
Excellent.
No, they, they accept the budget, so we can use that line item. Um, the other thing that we, that I want to talk to you about, maybe Tricia too, that we're looking at moving, because the courthouse is getting ready to be renovated, we really probably have to move. And I would like to take anything that we do not have in electronic form and put it in electronic form. And I'm looking at about three thousand dollars and saw it put on top of what Tricia asked me for. And we're gonna have a meeting with Nathan later in the week just to determine if some of this cost can be filled through the bond. But anyway, I'm, I'm asking that I can step up to a three thousand dollars amount coming in the flow.
Okay, sounds like history needs to be kept here. These separately. So.
I would make a motion to approve first. We have a specific amount on that. No, we don't. We have to make a motion to get the work done.
The maximum is forty hours or two hours an hour, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's over.
Okay, moved and seconded, ones are available. Other account, other discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. And a second motion for a thousand dollar expenditure, transfers of records.
Okay, I would make a motion. Or auditor, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, the same line item, other discussion. One favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
So when would they begin doing this?
I don't know. I hadn't, uh, I wasn't really gonna put anything in place, and I knew for sure guys were okay with this. Yeah, I could contact him from Manitron tomorrow and, and see what the timeframe is. I'm hoping it's, you know, fairly soon. Plus, I gotta kinda coordinate that with Rowing, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan. Good evening, everybody. Uh, first, I want to introduce Renee, who hasn't, haven't met her yet, Taylor Bailey. Uh, she's been helping in the office for about two and a half months now, proving to be very helpful in trying to help me to get caught up on a few things in the office. Um, first, as I warned you in your email, we have a very salty change order request. As I also noted in the email, um, I have a number of concerns, not necessarily with whether the work needs to be done or not, because it does, but with who should be responsible for covering some of the costs due to some continued discovery of shortcomings on the architect's part. So I'm not gonna ask for approval on all of it tonight. Uh, Matt Irtan and Eric Rowland are meeting with their CEO tomorrow to go over the COR and my voluminous list of concerns on individual parts. And then Matt actually had one con- or I'm sorry, Eric had one concern about the price, one of, that Ton and Blank suggested on one of the things in there. So what I would like from you tonight, I guess is in three parts. Authorization to work with Maurice to approve the rest of it on a case-by-case basis, once he and I are satisfied with the answers we've gotten. Um, that's number one. Number two is to approve part of the change order that is the result of conversations I've had with the architects and the judge and/or prosecutor about specific upgrades for improved security communications or both. So there's about eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars in there out of the seventy that everything is kosher with. It's just either changes we made last mi- it's mostly changes last minute that we decided should have been included and we just had not conveyed, or had gotten lost in transition from me and the judge to the consultants to the architects back and forth. And that's for an additional door for security, additional like buzzers and video screens so that to go with that door in proving security when inmates are being brought into the court suite, and then some electrical updates for, um, jury room, prosecutor's office, and circuit court office monitors for watching those screens for video evidence in jury trials, that sort of. So those are parts one, I'm sorry, parts two, three, and items two, three, and five, and part of item six on the list in your meeting packet, the first page that looks like this. And then the rest of it, like I said, I just want the okay to work with Maurice, once he and I are satisfied that Lumenot Rowland has taken sufficient responsibility for errors that should not have happened. Um, in some cases, it's probably work that needed to be done, and the additional cost is only being incurred because one of the subs has to re-mobilize, that sort of thing. But at least one thing that's probably twenty thousand dollars is just a straight-up screw-up on the architect's part where work is done and they have to redo it. And that's the one where I am really pushing. Um, they, there's just no excuse for that. And poor Matt has jumped into this project and not been able to start working much on the courthouse because he's just finding more and more fires he has to put out.
Okay, at this point, we need a, uh, motion to approve items two, three, five, and part of six. Change order request for eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five. Not to make that.
Okay, uh, second.
Any other discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Unfortunately, that'll push the project back a little bit, just a little request, a little motion. Oh, sorry, yes.
Get a, uh, motion for Maurice to, uh, work with this team, help reduce some costs, orders. Take out.
Yes, I am. Um. Not eager to sign, yeah.
Thank you. I don't, I, I do not want you.
I'll push back with you.
Okay, we need a motion. Take that motion, please, to, uh, to our spokesperson, and dealing with the rest of this. Second. Moved and seconded, other discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, that will push back construction a little bit, just because of how much time it has taken to get these sorted out. So I will have to work with Maurice, judge, prosecutor, and sheriff on revisiting the timeline for the open house that we might hold, once this is all ready to go. Um, very quickly, progress on the construction, that is still ongoing. Uh, we've received carpet today. We expect to, uh, get more of the flooring and bathrooms back to splash tile this week, doors and hardware as well. First floor painting is done. Ceilings on both floors will be finished next week. Flooring in the basement has been completed to the extent possible until rowing can get back to move the servers into the newly constructed IT room. Um, and then installation of soffit, fascia, gutters, and downspouts should all be completed this week. That's kind of where on progress.
Got an email F about files that need to be moved or something?
You talking about probations?
Oh, or that email.
Yeah, we were talking about probation was wanting to move stuff into the basement, but it's already, it's already full. So I, I just let you know that there's probably not even left there. There's one that I talked about Larry Weaver.
Yep. Okay.
That's a probation file, and I took him down there to go in the basement there. And then you can be moving twice.
Especially with the work release project for cost, or probably just labor in-house, trying to down there to make more room, we'd probably have to come outside of the projects. But it might be something to look into in the future as we're trying to condense more and more. You know, hopefully, some of the digitizing Laura brought up will help us to minimize some of that need. But if you've seen some of the records, retentions, rules for the state, you know, some of it is pretty outlandish as far as the timelines they require goes. Um, quickly on the courthouse project, like I said, not a lot to report because Matt's been putting out fires, but he has recruited another architect from the firm to help him. So he's started back a little bit. Um, and then as Laura mentioned, I'm meeting with her and other courthouse office heads to talk about digitizing and how we might to roll that into the bond and get some of those costs covered. Couple of other construction project issues that are not related to these buildings. Um, as you know, first of all, County Highway has gotten permission to address the roof on the front part of this building here, where we've had the leaks overhead and elsewhere. Um, Gary had spoken with John Allen and Larry Weaver, and they directed him to me. I contacted Ton and Blank's leadership, and they gave me a rough ballpark figure where they thought the costs would come in, but because it's a project on which they may want to bid themselves, they asked that I approach Rowland about doing the plans and specs. Um, and I've had a brief conversation with Matt and Eric about it. They're willing to do it, but I don't want Matt coming up here and doing any site inspections until I know that the commissioners are okay with.
Yes.
We're talking. That would make it better during. That'll be something that we will look at here. That is, I look at somewhere down the road. Yeah, 'cause that is, got some problems. That might just go away.
I still think it's better suited as a microbrewing facility if we ever get that building, if we ever vacate that building and get it sold off.
Yeah.
But, okay, so, uh, but, so I would like permission to have Rowland move forward with plans and specs on this building.
I would, I would make, uh, I would make.
I can second that. Moved and seconded, other discussion. That, uh, area, say you have funding?
Uh, motor vehicle highway.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, the sheriff has received permission to move forward with the jail basement, um, work release facility. Uh, Rowland had already started design on that when we were including it as an alternate for the bids for the Justice Center project. Had a call with Matt, Stephen Monday, and Sheriff Richwine today to make sure that Rowland, Lumenot Rowland understands exactly what those drawings looked like, should look like. There were some issues with the original, and the previous architect was trying to build it to basically maximum security levels, and that's not necessary for this facility. So there's some fine tuning and tweaking to be done, but the base drawings are already done. I just need to go ahead before I ask them to do any more work on that, that we're okay with using them on as well. They know the facility. Like I said, they already have plans eighty, seventy percent done, and they've got the information to correct them now, be able to help us. That, the project out here, the price range that Ton and Blank gave me, will probably, it will be enough that we'll have to mail bids to at least three selected contractors, but it won't hit that threshold. I don't think that requires advertising. Basement project is gonna come in less than Peter had thought it would, but we'll probably meet the threshold requiring advertisement. So we'll have to have sufficiently detailed plans and specs in order to comply with the law.
Conversation. Okay, so we're on the right track.
Yep.
So your last comment should be a motion to move forward with Rowing.
But that, the work release facility, like, design work.
I'm gonna make that motion to move forward. Okay. Just other area, other discussion. One favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. I will move quickly to the last three, 'cause I know we have a very eager clerk with us tonight. Um, quick IMT updates. We, as of last Tuesday, we had eleven new cases of COVID in April, one hundred and seventy-two cases in the first quarter, a large bulk of them in January and February. So it's still hanging, COVID is still hanging around, but it clearly has slowed up, although we've seen a few noteworthy people in Washington test positive. Um, county health's still administering the Pfizer vaccine. They're doing it on Wednesdays by appointment only, and those seeking Moderna vaccine need to go to a scheduled appointment at a participating drugstore. Health, if they haven't already received it, is expecting a shipment of a thousand at-home test kits this week. Next IMT meeting is the seventh of June. Um, next on the list, I will go quickly. Um, you've got a whole bunch of documentation. At the joint session, I had brought up that we are interested in the possibility of establishing a redevelopment commission, um, both in part of the ways we're looking at restructuring, how community development services are governed in the county as part of our strategic plan, and in part because of some of the housing project work we're doing with the community foundation. Per Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, fourteen, it's ultimately the council's discretion to establish one, but when, before that time comes, I hope to get the commissioner's blessing on it. I'm not asking for that endorsement tonight. Just wanted to keep the conversation alive and give you this information that's in your packet, and hear any questions or comments that you may have at this time. Uh, the CDC's executive board and strategic vision and committee are meeting for a lunch meeting next Monday, where we're gonna dig a little more deeply into this, as well as a couple of other statutory agencies that we may investigate for restructuring.
Job description of this committee in here.
What's that?
Is there a job description for that? You don't need to go through it.
Yeah, uh, there is. The first page with the number five gives kind of a brief detailing of what it actually does. And then there's a bunch of Indiana code language you can read through if you can't sleep at night.
No problem.
But that's all for now. I just, if you have any questions, I will answer them or take them back to come up with answers, but I just wanted to keep the conversation moving. And then finally, this is a late addition, 'cause I just had to call today. Uh, you may recall, Kent Croft had brought to our attention the opportunity for a free cybersecurity assessment, cybersecurity assessment through Purdue's CyberTap Agency. I had the call with CyberTap today. Um, Counselor Thompson and, uh, Sherry Gaylor were on the call with me as well. And I have sent Kevin the agreement with Purdue, which outlines the services and that we don't pay anything, and he has said it's okay. If we can get this moving forward, then we should have a report on our cybersecurity assessment of risks and strengths by late June or early July, and be able to get into the program early enough to do a second round assessment in twenty twenty-three as a follow-up. Uh, Dr. Beckman with CyberTap suggested that if we have this report, uh, and the knowledge it will provide, it might help, be helpful in pursuing various state and federal grant funding for cybersecurity improvements. So if you're okay with that, I'd like permission to go ahead and move forward, and that's in your packet today. Sorry, you're just now getting it. I said I didn't have the call with Joe until this morning. Kevin said that the document.
Could I add something to that?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this also could help, uh, Sherry, in her application for a grant, uh, she has submitted that she would like to apply for a grant that will help her, and they will help her also in the preparation of that grant application.
That require a signature?
Yeah, I've got a page you can sign. I think they actually included my name on it, since I'm the check, the checkpoint person, but I can let you sign it and ensure the charge.
So we'd need a motion to, uh, sign an agreement with the university on this cyber protection.
Make a push. Cybers.
Okay, motion's been made. Second?
Yeah, I second that.
Other discussion? One favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Then, Mr. Kuchmay, I do have on hold on my phone if, or when you're ready to move on to the next agenda item.
Yeah, Nathan, do we need to think about getting new store building, the record?
That's probably a bigger question than I can answer, but I, it might be worth investigating some sort of off-site storage op- option, at least once we know how much we can digitize and the courthouse offices don't need to have quick access to physical copies of.
I'm of the two members, and for the court stuff alone, we're not a good candidate for digitizing, or a good candidate for off-site storage. And there's that entire room at the pontiff hut that is also records that has to be stored, have to be maintained. So when you're looking at buildings, you have to remember that room at the pontiff.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for Jason?
All right, Jason, you are on speakerphone, and you should be mic'd now.
Okay, thanks, Nathan, appreciate it. Um, so good evening, this is, uh, Jason Kuchmay, and, and as before, um, here speaking on behalf of County Ehrlich, and a number of other local property owners, and they've asked me to just continue my comments regarding the county's ongoing efforts to amend, uh, the UDO as it relates to commercial solar projects. Uh, obviously, I touched on it briefly at the last meeting, but I did not conclude my comments. I do recall inquiring about, you know, why, why make any changes in the first place, discussed who was, who was behind the changes. You know, I also mentioned some of the procedural missteps behind the proposed changes that will result in a legal challenge of any enactment. And I also recall asking, you know, why the rush? Certainly for something this important. That's a, that's a, that's a big question. Why, why the rush for something with such a large impact on the county and the county's property owners? Uh, you know, I would hope, you know, that commissioners would share in the desire to get it right, not just to, to do it fast. You know, as it stands, we've got the commissioners pushing to make commercial permitted use, uh, while also removing most of the enforceable standards, to be honest, which is a, uh, a dangerous combination. And, and the Pandora's box that could open as a result, to me, is, is a little frightening. And, and I don't want the county to only realize that after it's too late, you know, to realize that after multiple solar companies have already. Intillage of the situation. So, you know, my clients would certainly urge you to keep the standards, you know, don't, don't blur them so that they're meaningless. Let's, let's keep the BZA involved in the process. I would like to think that's something everybody wants to see. We know that, we know the plan commission wants to see that. Certainly a, a significant majority of the county residents wanna see that. In fact, if you recall, the, the plan commission unanimously rejected the attempt to change commercial solar as a permitted use. So again, that's, that's not just one or two members, but that, you know, with the exception, there's one extension, and otherwise, that was the entire plan commission. Now, the plan commission, you know, they did agree with the other changes that were requested by the commissioners. Again, they recognized the significant importance of keeping commercial solar as a special, special exception. They recognized the importance of the layer of protection that that frankly provides the county, uh, recognized the ability to place appropriate conditions on an approval by the zoning appeals, the ability to require and review the details of the project, you know, the ability to insist upon standards and to hear the other side of the story before rendering a decision. Um, you know, and I really, you know, I can't stress enough the problems that are going to result. Commercial solar is made a permitted use when coupled with the other proposed changes blurring or eliminating any development standards. Uh, you know, as a permitted use, if that goes through, the planning staff, you know, they must approve a qualifying application. And in this case, it would be an application governed by no, uh, you know, no substantive standards. You know, and that's not only for Mammoth or some other current company, but that's for the next company, the company after that, company after that. And, and the flaws that come with those changes, the lack of standards, the lack of protections, they're only gonna become even more magnified as more companies take advantage of the county. My, my clients are just asking that the county and that the commissioners, you know, be forward-thinking, let's, let's not go backwards here. Now, this shouldn't be about, you know, getting perceived money in the door at any cost. Uh, and, and frankly, you know, your existing ordinance, obviously, it's not chasing any solar developers away. And so I don't know what the plan commission is gonna do here in the coming weeks on this permitted use issue, uh, you know, but if they continue to reject the permitted use change, and this comes back to the commissioners, you know, I truly hope, you know, that you're gonna do the right thing. And, and if the changes do go through as currently drafted, I, I, unfortunately, I would expect another legal challenge. You know, but honestly, I think much of this could probably be avoided by following the lead of Delaware County. You know, after some concerns were raised in Delaware County about having commercial solar as a permitted use, you know, they agreed to make it a special exception. But importantly, the county created a committee of governmental officials, solar representatives, and opposition to all get together and work through the changes to the ordinance. You know, to go ahead and find common ground where they can. You know, they created a collaborative process that was designed to get it right and to minimize conflict. Something, that's something I would ask that you consider as well. Certainly, that would leave a, a better collective taste in the mouth, as opposed to having the commissioners. commissioners versus a standardless permitted use on, on everybody. And, and, and to do so in the face of reasoned opposition and against the wishes of a unanimous plan commission. So, so on behalf of my clients, you know, they, they, they want to thank you and they want, and they do hope that you will do what is right when this comes back for you. That's, again, that's what is right, not just what the solar company wants to see regardless of the impact. So, and with that, I, I, I thank you for your attention this evening and.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Okay.
Maurice has an update on parking lot.
Gary has received three proposals that we will be taking advisement. Laura has been helpful in directing us where the funds will be coming from. She's given us a few different options. The town has been very cooperative in this joint project, including sidewalks being a compliant and lighting, possible lighting, I should say. We will be taking this to the council next week. It looks like a good possibility of having parking lot ready for use prior to the completion of the project. And this was Gary, what he had discussed with them and a availability to do it. So we should be, should be on track. And Nathan, I do have a quick question here, like what is the timeframe back on the Justice Center from when it's completed to when the courthouse project needs to be evacuated?
So, let's see. Probably have four and a half months to be on the safe side, maybe a little bit longer than that, but with the current change order affecting, we're looking at mid to late June where we expect construction to be done on the Justice Center. As of right now, we anticipate construction for the courthouse to begin after the general election in November, so sometime around the fourteenth or fifteenth.
Okay.
I can't say for certain how, when we have to start moving out until we kind of get a sense of how long it's going to take to move each department out and figure out where we're moving them to. But there's a July, August, September, about a four and a half to five month window between end of this project and beginning of that project.
Okay.
Anything else, Maurice?
I don't have anything else. Any questions on the parking lot update?
Okay, we're down to other business. One is to approve and sign claims and pay. Eight, nine?
Actually, should include seven as well. Got seven, eight and nine. And I have looked at seven, eight, nine and I, and I've looked at claims. I make a motion, prove as presented.
All second. Okay, claims and payroll. Move and seconded. Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two, we have the signing. Minutes, April fourth, fifteenth, facial station.
Okay, and I would make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
All second. Move and seconded on the minutes. Other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
We have the approval and signing of the emergency rural healthcare grant, the ambulances. And I had to rewrite the grants. Second proposal, of course, reducing it down to one ambulance rather than two. But as we talked about before, the percent county has to pay drastically increased. That was for that move. We need a motion to continue on this approval for the ambulance by saying this emergency healthcare. Aye.
Second that motion?
Seconded. Favor of saying the paperwork over this grant application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prove and signing for state construction. Or. Laura prepares this report every year. Get a motion. Sign off on this report.
So move.
Seconded. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a quest for the probation office conference, season Indianapolis, May fourth, fifth, sixth. Motion to approve that request.
Yeah, I would make a motion. West.
Second. Okay, move and seconded. Favor approving the pressing. I would say aye.
Aye.
Discussion board. Any comments this evening? We have a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion.
Thank you.
Hey, meeting adjourned.